Please stand for the National Anthem performed by Asheville High School students, thus Emrick and Virginia Griffith. Thank you so much for that, I'll turn it right over.
Hi, everyone. I'm Daniel Woodrow, President of the Asheville City Association of Educators. I want to thank the students, staff, the parents, the community members, the school board members, and the school board candidates that joined us here tonight. As you know, this is an historic opportunity. For the first time in Asheville's history, we will have an elected school board. There will be four seats open, but we've filled in the board. At the same time, our district is facing multiple crises. Our student needs are higher than ever. Asheville has one of the largest achievement and opportunity gaps between black and white students anywhere in the state. The low pay in Asheville, especially coupled with the high cost of living, is leading to a mass wave of resignations. And we have declining balance in school facilities. The students are the heart of our school, and the staff are its lifeblood. We must recruit and retain competent, experienced, and passionate staff in order to meet what they need every day. Tonight, we'll hear from these wonderful candidates, their ideas for navigating these crises and guiding our district into the years ahead.
Hi, I'm Honor Moore. I'm founder of the Asheville City Schools District-wide Parent Group. We founded about a year ago in the middle of the pandemic. And hey, folks, here we are. People in this room got our children through the pandemic. Can we give them a hand? Before we begin, I'd also like to do some shout-outs to some people. I'm not even sure if they're here. Um, we did it. We are getting an elected school board, okay? All right. So I'd like to thank our mayor, Esther Mannheimer. I don't know if she's here. She's, I know she's coming tonight. Does anyone see her? Don't see her. I'd like to thank the Asheville City Council. I saw Antonette here. You want to wave, Antonette? All right. Is it, are there any other Asheville City Council members here right now that I'm missing? Just want to make sure. I also want to thank our current school board members. So if you are a current school board member, please stand right now. I know you guys have really been working hard. And if you are a candidate running for any office right now, would you please stand? All right. Notice we're in campaign season. Take the time to meet candidates running for office. They're all working so very hard, including all of these people up here who are willing to come out and answer a lot of questions today. So without further ado, I'm going to let Ginger take over.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ginger Hamlin, and I'm the Student Body Vice President at Asheville High. And I'm excited to be here today at this forum just to represent both the voices of the students at my school, but also the voices of brand-new voters like yourself.
All right. So this forum will consist of three parts. First, the candidates will have an opportunity to introduce themselves, and each of the sponsors of this event will ask open-ended questions, and we will conclude with three short answer questions. We're going to keep it moving. Our timekeepers are located at the front of the room. Wave timekeepers. They will raise a yellow card, raise yellow card, when a candidate has 20 seconds left to respond, and a red card when their time is concluded. Candidates may not speak longer than their allotted time. Sometimes that happens, but just try to finish your phrase. And introductions will be limited to one minute, and open-ended responses to, yeah, introduction. Your introduction's one minute. And then all the other questions are open-ended to about 1:30 seconds. And then due to the number of candidates we have here tonight, which is really awesome, we just have to keep it in that time. Daniel?
All right. We're going to hop straight into the introduction. Now unfortunately, Mr. Bill Young cannot make it be with us here tonight, but he has a representative here who will give his one-minute introduction. So if you're ready, come on down.
Good evening, everybody. How are you doing? My name is Keith Young. Before I start, I just want to say thank you to everybody who put their name on the ballot. It is really crazy running for office, and like even for the first time in an elected school board, I thought this would be like the weirdest feeling ever. So congratulations to you already. You've already got the hard part out the way. You put your hand on the ballot. So congratulations to you folks, and I'm with you all the way. I'm here for William, Bill Young. He's put his name on the ballot as well. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, so he sent me in his stead. He's my father. He's a great guy. I'll tell you a little bit about himself in a minute. He's dedicated his life to education. He believes that education is the foundation to equity. He also started his teaching career, believe it or not, in New Jersey, in Plainfield, New Jersey. He taught high school history. He made his way back to North Carolina, and he spent 20 years with the state, but he spent an additional 30 years working in and out and dedicating his life to the Asheville City School system, whether it be the original coordination of cities and schools, communities and schools, or working as a substitute teacher, which he does now, and exceptional children. Mr. Young believes in a fund balance policy that will sustain Asheville City School. He believes in raising teacher pay, and he believes in the reorganization of central office. I don't know what else I can say in a minute. They're telling me to stop. I can go on. I'll just say I hope you consider Mr. William Bill Young on your ballot, and thank you, folks, and thank you all for being here tonight.
At this time, we'll turn it over to the next candidate. You'll please pass the microphone to your left at the end of your one-minute. And audience, please hold your applause until the end of each section.
We did a better run through it first. Stick with us here.
Let's see. Do you want to start down with the end?
We'll begin with introductions.
Yeah, do you want to start?
You can pass the microphones, and then pass, pass it to Pepe, and so on.
Can everybody hear me? Hi, I'm Liza English Kelly. I'm a former Asheville City Schools employee. I served at Asheville Primary for four years, where I was able to see equity in action every day. I saw the value of connection and personal relationships that I look forward to developing with our community and elected to the board. In Montessori, we see, say that we don't correct children. We observe where our process breaks down, and then we reteach, we readjust ourselves, and we fix what's wrong. We need to refocus on children and teachers in this district and keep them at the center of every decision moving forward. I've been here for 11 years. My partner's a career educator, and our two eldest daughters in our blended family both attend to Asheville City Schools, and I'm dedicated to public education as it means for equity and possibility for all children. Thank you.
My name is Miri Masachi. My family and I have been in Asheville for the past 13 years. I am a mother of three, two of which are in the Asheville City School system. I'm a little nervous, excuse me. I am a movement instructor, and I teach at different schools and preschools in Asheville. I've been doing so for the last 12 years. I am a big believer in teaching in a way that allows kids independence, resilience. And I think the system now, I think it's changed in many ways. I'm very happy to be part, to be part of that change and give of my time. I think I will be the one with under a minute. Thank you.
My name is Taffia Sago. I am an Asheville City Schools parent. I have been in the area, well, I moved to the area originally in 1988 to go to college. I'm born and lived in college. And I remember some of our civic leaders, like Gosh, Edward Smith, Brownie Newman as freshmen. I've been here that long, 52 years old. I have been attending almost every school board meeting for the past eight years. The past seven years, I've served as either Vice President of a PTO or President of a PTO, President, that sort of thing. I show, I pay attention, and I believe that we are better if we work as one Asheville and we don't pit schools, teachers, or parents against one another. And I have stops.
Hi, I am Rebecca Strummer, and I am running because I believe that we all thrive when we look out for each other. I believe that public schools are the place where we can support that in our kids, and our kids can live into the values of cooperation and community. I'm a parent of two Asheville City Schools students. They're waving to me. A fifth grader at Hope Fletcher Elementary and a seventh grader at Asheville Middle School. I'm a social work professional with over a decade of experience in administering public funds and in implementing high-quality programs. I've dedicated my life to serving others by building authentic relationships and honoring the wisdom that people bring to their own lives. I would love to serve on the Board of Education because I think that there's a power when people come together, when they listen to each other, when they find solutions that will help everyone.
Hi, my name is Sarah Thoyberg. I've lived in Western North Carolina about 25 years. I've been a Nashville City School parent for 14, both of my kids K through 12. I have volunteered in almost every capacity in the schools during that time. My first professional job was a public school high school teacher. I did that for a few years, and went back to law school, and my second career is as an attorney. And I tell everybody being a lawyer is easier than being a public school teacher. You all know that. I have served on a lot of boards and commissions, locally, across the state, nationally. I've earned a lot of experience with boards, and I think that's important because this is the Board of Education, and we're going to have to figure out how to work together to make things happen. I think the board needs to build some relationships. They need to improve some trust within the community, within the schools, and I look forward to serving on a board that can serve our teachers and our students. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Ray, and I am excited to run for the Board of Education. I am a product of public education. I am a passionate advocate for public education. And I believe that our democracy is only as strong as our public schools. My wife and I have raised four, are raising four children. I've been a Nashville City School mom for 18 years. Our older sons have graduated, and I have two young daughters back there also waving, who are in second and fifth grade in high school. I taught high school English for two years after college, realized quickly that it was not my calling, returned to law school, and became an Assistant United States Attorney. In that position, I have seen what happens when students do not feel held by their community. And I have seen that we, I know that Nashville City Schools is filled with teachers. We have the assets to make every child feel welcome, and that is why I'm running. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jesse Moore. Parents call me Sarge. My students call me First Sergeant. Firm but fair. That's what, that's what I would like to bring to the board here in Asheville City, firm but fair to system, which is going to have to be made as we go through three to four years, maybe eight years. Leadership skills. I've brought some good leadership skills. I was a Marine for 25 years. And active duty, so I've brought some pretty good leadership skills to the community. I enjoy mentoring. I love skating kids. I love grabbing kids. I love stuff inside of your head sometimes. I just love to simp, big simp out and about as they grow older. And I love giving back to the community, right? That's something that I really do love.
There will be a total of six questions. Candidates have 1 minute and 30 seconds to respond, and they will pass the microphone to the left. We will alternate first speaker after each question. First question will begin with Liza Kelly. What specific ways do you plan to make yourself engaged in the Asheville City Schools community with both staff and families?
That's a great question. I think that engagement is something that's been lacking over the last little bit of recent history. I already have some existing relationships after serving at Asheville Primary for four years, and I look forward to continuing to connect with the community in variety of ways. I am here to listen. I plan to reach out to every school community, both parents, teachers, involved families, and to continue to build relationships throughout my time on the board. It's really important that we hear all voices, and that all voices have a seat at the table in the big board, and then those voices are advocated for in a fair and transparent way.
For me, I would like to focus on speaking to many students as well. I would love to hear voices of our, obviously, our older students, maybe middle school and high school, and to hear what they have to say and how they would like decisions that involve them. How would they, how would they like to take those? How would we can improve? And have their voices heard, as well as their parents, families, and specifically teachers. I think teachers have a lot to say and a lot of experience. They're the ones in the classrooms, and I feel like talking to them and maybe going to PTO meetings or to meet with teachers and hear what they have to say and what their ideas are.
That's a big question. We have a city of 93,000, correct me, Esther, if I'm wrong. And we have 40,000 of that population are inside of our legacy Asheville City Schools boundaries, and more are served outside of that boundary. I want to connect with all of our county. I want our schools to be a place that serves all of Asheville. Additionally, I think it is more important than ever that the Board of Education genuinely engages with our Asheville Housing Authority parents and with our historically black neighborhoods and with all of our constituencies, and doesn't just have meetings where they are referring to representing those constituencies. It is finally important that we listen to all of our students, that we listen to our staff, and that when we are asking the experts, that we are talking to the staff who are actually the experts in educating our kids and serving our kids. And I think I'm out of control. Thank you.
I think that what the most important priority for the board coming in will be to build a culture of trust, transparency, and participation. So when I think about engagement, I think about what would it look like for there to be a trusting community where people can engage and be heard and participate. I couldn't agree with Pepe more, that that means we go out and we find people to hear their voices. I would like to see ACA E representatives as a standing agenda item on every board meeting. I think that making things structured and predictable will be a way that all our stakeholders can understand how to participate, what it means to participate, and that all voices will be heard. It can't be chaotic. It must be a system that people can understand and participate in. I'd also love to see student voices lifted up on a regular basis and in a structured way. When I think about student government participating tonight, I'm absolutely inspired. I cannot wait for my girls to become the age that you are and participate. I think the engagement has to go both ways. I think the school board needs to be out, listening to the voices across the community, folks that live in different parts of town, showing up in the schools. Superintendent and Mayor of the schools, I think there needs to be a lot more of the board folks being out in the community. And then I also think if it comes inward, having a structure by which teachers have a process to share information, and parents have a process to share information, and it probably needs to be more of their other government than just the school board meeting hall. And I don't know what that looks like, but I think the school board has this really amazing opportunity to redo this. I think meetings don't have to look the way they look now. And I think we can, again, the school board has the burden to go out into the community and listen, and then I think we need to figure out how the school board meetings themselves and how decisions
Just stopping for just one second. Our friends on Facebook say, please hold the mic a lot closer to your mouths and talk as loud as you can, please.
That will not be a problem. And you know that's not a problem for me. In fact, you might want me to hold it over. So engagement, all about engagement. In fact, already, I have been engaging and engaging in listening sessions with teachers and staff who have been willing to meet with a group of us, actually. But in the process of running, I've been trying to understand and identify issues and just learn, right? We need to listen, and we need to learn. I want to hear from parents. I will be in the schools. I love being in the schools. In fact, I embarrass my daughters every time I drop them off because I'm greeting every single person I see. I also want to take this moment to say the other engagement that has to happen is from the superintendent into the schools, and from the central office into the schools. They need to be listening to staff, listening to students, listening to parents. So I think the engagement is on the part of the board, but I would also suggest that we need a leader who listens and engages and develops that culture of trust by engaging from the bottom up. They're not from the top. This is the person at the bottom who engages every level up, finds out what needs to happen, and finds a way to make it happen. Because if we are engaging with our students and making them feel engaged, we will see success across the board. Thank you.
Here we go. Teachers cannot do it by themselves. And I'm one, I was in the classrooms for about 50, 60 years. We need support from parents. What I would like to do here is, I'm grabbing, I know we are older, but I want some of those young kids that graduated after the year 2000. I'm going to look for them. They are a smart generation. I'm going to look for them. I'm going to grab them. And I want to let them know that they don't have the answers to the questions that we have. Come and ask the persons. Another thing I would like to do here is, they're going to help their kids. They're smart enough. Now, my parents weren't, well, I'm not saying they weren't smart enough, but they can help with the language, with the math, with the English that is going on now, right? Teachers, once again, we can't do it ourselves, right? So those parents are going to have to set their kids down and get them to learn it, and that is what we have to do. I'm going out in the community. I'm looking at everyone in front of me right now, but I want to see other faces besides what I see in here. I got to get to those kids, and there's a bunch of them that graduate from Asheville High. They're smart enough. They got degrees, and I want to get them. They got kids that go into Asheville City School. I want to say, come and teach your, teach your kids.
One more request from Facebook land. Volume is sounding great. Can you just state your name before you answer? Would really help, folks. Thank you.
Okay, this next question will begin with Miri Masachi. What is your opinion on consolidation with Buckham County Schools?
I think that would be a bad idea. I would not want for that to happen. I think Asheville has a very unique fabric of people, and I think it would be very different. I think our needs here are very different. So I would not want that to happen. I would like Asheville City Schools to stay as a district home.
My name is Pepe Sago. I think I'm supposed to introduce myself. Consolidation of Asheville City Schools and Buckham County Schools. My understanding at this point is that would require us to raise all the Buckham County School taxes up to the same level as Asheville City Schools, because there is a state requirement that if there's a consolidation districts, then no child can be disadvantaged. And on a financial level, that means that we've got to have the same tax rates. And I'm not sure that Buckham County as a whole is ready for that, but I think that there are parts of the city of Asheville that are not currently in the Asheville City Schools district that might be ready for that and might be ready to join us. So right now, what I'm looking at is areas of the city of Asheville, areas like Asheville Mall, areas like the patchwork quilt that we have up at Beaver Lake that may want to shift voluntarily and maybe with a longer plan in steps into the Asheville City Schools district. Asheville City Schools has so many programs, has instructional assistance for so many early grades, and if we were to consolidate, we would really be at a disadvantage and negatively affect our kids.
My name is Rebecca Strummer. I'm not in favor of consolidation of the schools at this time. I think that Asheville City Schools have served the students of Asheville in a way that has been innovative. It has been student-centered. in a way that has been innovative. It has been student-centered. We have created something here that is worth investing in and in maintaining for the children who grow up inside of our district. And we're at a moment where we're going to have to work very, very hard to make it what it needs to be for all students. And I believe that that will happen as a separate school district and not through consolidation.
I'm Sarah Thornburg. I think consolidation would be a mistake. I think our system, sorry, I think our system is small. And with the smallness, we can have more interaction with teachers. I think the parent community is smaller and we really benefit from that. I think that is also the double-edged sword. The smaller we get, the more likely consolidation is. And ten years ago, people would say, the county doesn't want us and the city doesn't want to consolidate. And it's a very safe topic. You're never going to consolidate. But the smaller our district gets, the scale of having our separate central office, no, is not sustainable. So I think that's the danger, is that the size of our school system makes us vulnerable to consolidation. But I think that would be a big mistake. And so to extend the school board to make sure that a small system can thrive. That's where we're successful.
I'm Amy Ray. Excuse me. I am not in favor of consolidation. And if that's where I thought we were headed, I would not be sitting here saying, right? I believe that we can save Asheville City Schools. And I will say, we are in a crisis moment right now. Let's not kid ourselves. We are at risk of consolidation if we don't get our house in order. And that means our financial house in order. And most importantly, it means empowering our teachers to teach. It means that we have to have a system in which our teachers feel supported and want to teach here. It means then that they have the freedom to complain. I have met with parents, I mean, teachers, and what they have said to me is, well, gosh, I would say this, but I'm scared. I don't know if I should say this. I might get in trouble. I'm sorry, in what universe should a teacher have to make that statement? Not a universe in which we want our students to attend. So we need to change the culture to one in which we are all on the same team. As Rebecca said, we're all moving forward. We are together. And if we do that and we fix the financial situation that we're in, which we can do, and then we hire a leader who can lead from the bottom up and empower our teachers to teach and our students to learn, we will not have to worry about consolidation.
My name is Jesse Warren. They said if she wants something, no, put it on her hat. If it's broke, keep breaking it. Right? And that's what, I got here in two thousand three, in two thousand and three. They said that we're going to build in Buckland County in two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six, seven, now we have two now. But it's up to us. And if we don't watch it, we will be part of Buckland County. If we don't stop fighting each other, we don't stop, if we stop fighting each other and we we just work together as Asheville City Schools, it won't be a problem. They won't want to come to us. But we are fighting each other so much that I can see why we, our enrollment is going down. Our teachers are leaving. We can't even afford to live in this city until we put the right people in place so that we can have some affordability in housing. I wouldn't be here in this Asheville City if it wasn't for the people that I know that have given me the opportunity. It's too expensive. And how we, I mean, we talking about, if we put the right people in the right places, and it's going to be bad. It's going to be bad for a little bit. But I guarantee you, it will recover and we will be better than what we are right now. Because right now, we are being worked.
Thank you. Hey, we are seven minutes ahead of time, so help me interject. Before we begin, we are filled with educators and teachers. And I got a text from a board member that we couldn't hear Sarah. Oh, I'm so sorry. So go ahead, Liza.
It's okay. Thank you. I'm Liza English Kelly. In addition to the taxes, tax raises that Buckland County would face and the geographic area that would have to be encompassed by our current zone, Asheville City Schools has tremendous opportunity here to provide unique educational opportunities for all children who are city residents and to take advantage of the proximity of schools to establish collaborative and shining examples of what schools could look like and should look like as they serve urban populations. And we have the opportunity to lift the next generation out of poverty through opportunity that are provided in those schools. We have this moment right now to beef up our magnet programs and to increase the unique themes that are offered by those schools. And that's something that makes these schools really special and should be celebrated not only in the city limits, but beyond.
Okay, thank you so much. This next question will begin with Pepe Asago. The question is, what specific interventions and policies would you advocate for to address student mental health needs?
It has been hard two years. I'm feeling this really strongly personally. It's definitely impacted all of our family. We we have to meet the kids where they're at. We have to retain our teachers. We have to provide continuity for our students. Where this intersects with the enrollment issue that I was talking about is that when families are economically displaced and many of them are pushed out of our in-district borders into somewhere else in Asheville, they lose their support network, they lose their friends. We need to do something about continuity for students who are housing displaced. We have to have recommend more than the previously recommended levels of counselors, therapists, school-based social workers in our schools. And we need to be at least double where we're at right now. And we're going to have to have the funding for that. So I guess I will talk about supporting the current board's push for raising the tax rate in the next months.
This is an excellent question. I appreciate you asking it. My name's Rebecca Strummer. And I think that for some of us, it's easy to try to forget that we are living through a slow-moving trauma. Our children are being hurt. What has happened over the course of the last two years is not normal and is not okay. And we've, as a community, as a school community, had to find our way and make mistakes because there's no other option but to make mistakes when you face something like a pandemic. So in this particular moment, I would advocate for using SRF funds immediately to increase the amount of mental health supports within the school systems. I'm also very impressed by the model of Asheville Middle School's new in-school health center that I hope will be expanding, I understand, into the high school as well. And I think that, I see that as a long-term solution because I'm very aware of bringing in supports with temporary money only to face a fiscal cliff when that money's gone and then you lose those people that you've come to rely on. So I think we've already started a system that we can continue to invest in. And I love that it's a community partnership connection because that's for sustainability loss.
Hi, I'm Sarah Thornburg. I think the mental health issues we are seeing today are vastly different than what we used to see. And so the structures we have in place in our schools need to be vastly different. I don't think the old models work anymore. I think part of the problem is legal and I guess privacy issues, which are obviously valid. But there's got to be a way for the support services to be offered in a way that at the moment, teachers, if they're the first responders or the mental health counselors in the school system, have a way to do something without having to jump through a bunch of hoops. I mean, that's just my sense, is that the provision of mental health services is slow. I think the students probably know better than anybody what they're struggling with. And student-led initiatives that provide new ways of doing it would be worth pursuing.
Thank you. Amy Ray. I think that it would be impossible to overstate the need for additional mental health services in our schools. I have, what I'm hearing from teachers is that they are dealing with trauma every day. Students are showing up in classrooms unable to learn, not ready to listen. And who can blame them, right? No one blames them. They are, therefore, in our younger grades, it's a disruptive environment when there is no one to care, take, to address the mental health needs and the trauma that's happening. I have been really thinking about this since meeting with the teachers. And I asked them, I said, what do you need? Tell me what you would recommend. And I was told, we need a therapist on every hall. This was an elementary school. We need a therapist on every hall. I started adding that up and I thought about it. And I've been thinking about the Dogwood Trust, I'm thinking about Mahak. And I've been thinking, I've been talking to some county commissioners about, you know, we need thirty mental health therapists. I know that sounds like a lot, but it's not. We need more people in the schools to address this issue. And I think we have to search for the funding. I think we have to secure it. And I think we need to be more creative than just going to county commission, the city council, expecting them to pay. We've got to find the people who fund healthcare and get them to address those needs by giving us more therapists. Thank you.
Okay, it's hard being the last one. But my name is Jesse. See, that's okay, because kids need to be, they want to be loved. They want to be loved, right? What we need to do, what I would love seeing happen is, first of all, the parents need all the help. If we can support the parents, I think we might can. Once a kid leaves their house and comes to school, maybe they feel good about themselves, right? And maybe that kid will sit and listen, for first period at least, right? But teachers, teachers, we are still parents. We are. And so it means that if Johnny is having a rough time, all right? Because we know what's going on in the neighborhood and everything else. And we hear from another student, if he's having a rough time, we need to spend some time with him. There's nothing wrong with it. There's nothing wrong with just letting kids study on their own and put a little time on this kid. It will help in about three to four years. All right? And that's what we need to do. All right? I would love to see, I would love to go into a classroom each and every day and just walk and help kids. See them in the hallway, see them in the cafeteria. All right? And just say, hey, how you doing? All right? You'd be surprised how much love that that kid will receive with that. And that is bringing people into these classrooms and buildings. All right? Bring them in.
We, this is Liza English Kelly. We absolutely need to expand access to mental health. We need to prioritize social-emotional learning. We know that the foundations of social-emotional learning begin at home, but beyond that, they begin in pre-K. And we need to expand access to that. We need to prioritize building trusting relationships, mutually trusting relationships with teachers and peers in the classroom, between teachers and students and families outside of the classroom. We need to ensure that our teachers feel supported so that they can meet their students' needs every single day. Because when a student shows up to school with their backpack full of trauma, if a teacher is pulled in five thousand different directions and is struggling to make ends meet, they're not going to be able to help that child unravel those traumatic experiences. We need to prioritize having school counselors and social workers on every campus and look at Asheville Middle as a model for what access to mental health can look like. As a teacher, before I know that, before we can reach kids with academic lessons, we have to establish and build mutually trusting relationships with our students. We have to have high expectations that are developed with our students. Because when they meet their goals, they build their self-esteem. Thank you.
Mary Masachi, I agree with all the ideas of professional help and counseling. I don't want to repeat that. I have thoughts as well of integrating student help, asking students what they need, but also having older students engage with younger students within the school. I think an older, I don't want to call it an older buddy, but an older friend that can be helpful that is assigned at school. I think it gives the younger kid, an older kid to look up to. And I think it gives the older kid a sense of self-purpose and helping. And I think that could be a win-win for both kids. I also see a system of a teacher, of teachers and staff in the school being in charge of a number of students in the school. It doesn't have to be their students just to check in once, once in a, once a week, once a month, whatever it is. Not in tutoring, but just how are you doing? How are things going? Just kind of helping that student feel that there's an adult, not someone just at home, that there's an adult that's looking after them and interested in them and wants to help them with social, emotional issues. Again, not tutoring. I also just want to add, for the teachers, I would love to give the teachers the freedom and the time to actually emphasize the importance of the mental health, of mental health for children and to talk to them rather than to just emphasize on grades and scores and what they need to academically learn. Thank you.
Okay, we're running seven minutes ahead of time, just to let everybody know. Well-behaved audience. So this next question will begin with you, Rebecca. I can tell you guys, as the administrator of the Asheville City Schools District-wide Parent Group, this was a question that was submitted multiple times. It's a big one. It was an emotional one. The closing of Asheville Primary was highly contentious. Would you support the continued closure of additional Asheville City Schools in order to balance the budget? Beginning with you, Rebecca.
This is an incredibly emotional question. Our schools are our communities. Our schools are where our children are seen and loved and where they belong. I'm not in favor of closing schools. It's not something I want to do. One thing that I will do at all times, if I am elected to the Board of Education, is to be honest with you. I will not make promises I can't keep. I will not tell you things because I think it's what you want to hear. Our school district is in a financial crisis. I went to the budget presentation yesterday to see what I could learn. The information that the board got at that time was that we can spend what we're spending next year. And after that, will be bouncy checks. I want to understand that fully. If I'm a board member, I absolutely will lead into understanding every aspect of that. But when we think about what it will take to have a district that can pay its bills, that can pay its teachers a fair, livable wage, these are top priorities for me. And I'll look at what will it take for teachers in our district to be able to afford to live in our district? And how can we afford to do that? And I'm not going to tell you right now, but anything is off the table to make that priority.
Sarah Thornburg. I think the provision of quality pre-K education, preschool and pre-K is very important. We've heard from the county that they want the school system to provide that.
We've heard from the county that they want the school system to provide that. It's also my understanding that that building on Haywood Road is not safe for classrooms. And so I think there's a balance. I think they're going to figure out if we can offer this education in other places. I think there are significant budget issues at play. I think there is no question about the importance of pre-K education. I think the question is how does Asheville City Schools have a role in providing that in our community? And if there is a way in which that can happen, I don't, I don't think we're going to balance the budget on the back of a couple preschool classrooms. I don't think that solution is, it's that simple. But I do think there are significant financial issues and the, how pre-K education and preschool education is provided by our city school system probably is up for discussion.
Thank you, Amy Ray. Yeah, I, you know, I feel for the parents who's, the Asheville Primary School parents. I can, I've had four children go through Isaac Dixon. If they closed Isaac Dixon tomorrow, I would be heartbroken, honestly. At the same time, I have also seen the budget, I've been paying a lot of attention lately and listening, and I think that transparency and trust is the name of the game. I think that if everyone understands and we are, I think part of the problem with Asheville Primary School was the mixed messaging, was the whiplash that parents got. And I would commit to you that if I am elected, you will not feel that whiplash because you will see it coming, if it is coming. And I would try not to have it coming in terms of closing schools. That's not our first option, nor by the way, when I balance the budget on the backs of the classified workers. I, if I'm looking at the budget, I'm starting at the top and I'm asking what, and I'd like to suggest that that's at the bottom, but you've heard that. So I would not commit to you that I would not take any particular measure. What I will commit to you is that you will understand, if I'm on the board, why I'm taking that measure and you will be, I will promise you that I am fully educated on every single option and it will never start with closing schools or with, with paying our lowest-paid employees less. Thank you.
Jessica Warren. I have been I have been there. ROTC program. Still choked. When they're closed down, yes, we were upset. But it had its reason. It's still hurt. I still got kids, this class, we did the last group of kids that was in the program. In about two weeks, I'm going to App State and auditioning one of those ROTC students. I have been doing it for the last three months. At least one, they called, they asked their first salute, and it was important. It was important to them and it was important to the parents and it was important to us as instructors, as teachers. But we can do better. In case it doesn't open back up, parents, we can survive, we can do better. You give us two to three more years, four more years, maybe we can, if it's not the primary that you were, that your kids was in, maybe it would be a place for all kids to be on the block and grow, that we can open up. Thank you. Do I get extra time since we have?
I have been living through this trauma. I began an actual primary the year that this school was established in 2017. And I watched and witnessed how the city schools did not stand behind its own school from its infancy. Asheville City Schools is at a crucial moment where it needs to invest wholeheartedly in its own programming and commit to the expansion of pre-K that is being called for by our community. As has been said, budget fixes will not take place by beginning with our classified staff. We have got to build relationships and establish a culture of transparency between central office, the board, and all stakeholders that will be at the table from here on. Reactionary measures, like closing a school that is successfully building relationships and transforming the face of education, expanding access to programs that are typically limited to people who are able to pay private tuition, is unacceptable. It will not fix decades of fiduciary mismanagement and we have to do better. Thank you.
Mary Masachi. I disagree as well with the closing of a Asheville Primary School. I think pre-K is actually one of the places where it's our base and where the achievement gap or where that can be closed. And I think that is the base for so many of our children and it's very much needed. I agree that that is not the first place at all to look for balancing a budget.
I'll go into more depth. This is Debbie Asago. I found the whole process related to Dr. Freeman's off-the-cup recommendation to the board a year and a half ago that we close Asheville Primary School and take the capital funds that we received through selling the building to fix the budget issues in the general fund balance. I was delighted to hear Georgia Harvey, thank you, Georgia, explain to the board that all other fund balances must be entirely set by the year end, but the general fund balance is the money that is kind of left over. Eight years ago, we had eight million dollars in the general fund balance and that is too much. That's money that we could have spent on our students, we could have spent on equity. And we can spend large amounts of that money. We are spending it down faster than we are replenishing it. A piece of that is we did not, we're not raising our Asheville City School tax to keep up with inflation and the cost of living. The board last year requested, I believe it was twelve cents for a hundred dollars, and that was just keeping it the same. And this year, they're going to ask for that again, they got to find last year. And I just want to support the current board members in doing that. And I want to make sure I say yourself, there's just so much to say. I'm going to have to kind of last time for the next question because this is just, no, I'm done.
Thank you. This next question begins with Sarah Forner. And it comes from Asheville High and Sosa students who are wondering what changes they could see if you all are elected to the school.
Very good question. The high school is this amazing place with Sosa and Asheville High students who are learning firsthand how democracy works, how they're going to be citizens, what life goes they're going to take with them. The building blocks that they've had from elementary school and middle school just blossom in the high school. I think there are leadership opportunities. Student Government, the Black Student Union, there are places for kids to have leadership opportunities and I think there needs to be more of that. I think there are a lot of parent-run organizations that would probably vastly benefit from some kids they've been charged, not kids, but somebody else. I think that the school board members, as I said earlier, ought to get in the high school more often and see what everybody's up to and find ways that we can support those initiatives. Student Government's very good about helping form new clubs to meet new interests and there may be ways the school board can help with that. I think the curriculum that is in the high school is another place where students might have thoughts about changes in the way classes are taught. And I think the school board ought to be behind the student initiatives for that.
Amy Ray. So I haven't had a student in high school in a few years, but, but I was always impressed by the creativity, the empowerment, the voice that Asheville High and Sosa students have. I think if I am elected to the board, what I would like high school students to see is joy. I would like high school students to see teachers who are empowered. And because of that, they are allowed to be innovators in ways that perhaps they're not empowered to be now. So what I'm interested in and hoping in high school, I'm less about, you know, particular programs or, you know, I think the important thing is to empower the people who are experts in those areas. And I don't think that a hierarchy that presses down on that, and I know I've said this a lot y'all tonight, but I'm really convinced that this can be a transformative time. We are in crisis and what happens in crisis? Terrific change if we're willing to make it, if we have the courage. And I think we have the courage to, to have high school students see what it means to have teachers come to school, understanding that they have a voice. And that's what I would like to see if we're elected, if I'm elected. And whoever is elected, I hope that's what we will see. Thank you.
Jessica Warren. One thing is security. We need to upgrade security on all of our campuses. Security is our kids. My son graduated in '09 and we need security. And because each and every one of us, our parents are, you will have grandkids that are going to be going to one of these schools here and they need to be safe. So security would be one of the things I would like to see upgraded. They would know it by name. I won't be called Milk, Mr. Clean. They would know me as First Sergeant Jessica Warren. Hey, there goes the Asheville City School Board guy, right? They would know it because I will try to make myself known. And throughout all of students, not just certain one, but throughout all students, I think if they see that someone on the school board is present, maybe they will say, hey, maybe I might want to do that one day, right? Teachers, I would love to be the ear for the teachers, right? Because they need someone they can talk to. I take them around the track and walk with them and they'll get in line and, hey, grab the one and keep on walking. That's what I do. I might just grab Martha and just say, hey, I need some help here, right? But give the teachers a name. They don't feel, they need to release some of that. So that is what
Um, as has been said, if I'm elected to the school board, I would invite collaboration with Asheville High students. I recognize that the next generation is a generation of changemakers. And I would want to know where they would want to see changes. Every student from pre-K through high school is deserving of autonomy, trust and respect. Every student must feel valued at school and as an individual. And as part of that, their voice should be heard. And these young adults need to be brought to the table and invited to share their, their solution-focused ideas.
Mary Masachi. For me, the biggest change that I would like to see with Asheville High kids and Sosa kids is for them to feel like they have voice, for them to be engaged. I have one kid in Nashville High and my other is in Sosa. And many times I hear that decisions are being made without, and their feeling is they're not being asked, their opinion was not asked at all and they have, it just comes. And they would love to have it to share their opinion and how they feel about it and how they, many times they have really creative solutions and I feel like we're not listening or we're not hearing those solutions. So I would like to have a connection with kids. I think they have wonderful ideas. There's the ones that all our decisions actually truly affect and therefore their voice needs to be heard. Another change I would like to see is teachers that are happier. I think that will, that will come in a way that teachers as well will be heard, maybe as a board member to meet the teachers, to have teachers feel that they are freely and can always come and talk and give us their ideas and say what they're feeling and what they're needing as staff at the school. Just to see a happier all-around students and teachers. Thank you.
What she said. We do need to engage with our students and with our teachers at Asheville High School because they know more than many of our top-tier staff how to fix the issues and address the situations at the school. I told you I was going to steal some time in the next question. I want to clarify that Asheville, closing Asheville Primary School, when we look at costs and we don't look at revenue, we're in trouble. And the reason why we have a budget crisis, well, kind of a budget crisis, is that we planned to go from forty-six hundred, that's four thousand six hundred students, to fifty-one hundred students, five thousand one hundred students. We planned for that and then we constrained growth so that now we have around forty-one hundred students. So instead of gaining five hundred students, we lost five hundred students. When we talk about closing Asheville Primary School, and I pledge that I will do everything possible to keep it open and reopen it if elected, it is ridiculous to me to close a Montessori, public Montessori school that has the smallest achievement gap in our district and not build on that. We should be talking about which of our elementary schools would best be to merge that into not shutting it down. And I will also say that I have been, been eight years of budget meetings and have been watching all of this go down for eight years.
Thank you for this question. This is Rebecca Strummer. As a board member, the most important job that I think I would have is to tend to the culture of our district. I started by telling you, I will work to build a culture of trust, transparency and participation. And I believe that students at Asheville High School and Sosa and Asheville Middle School and North Star and all of our elementary schools will experience real change. Things will feel different when they go to a school that's part of a district that's healthy, where teachers are paid well, where their voices are listened to. Both of my daughters have had multiple teacher transitions this year. We've had kitchen table conversations about how teachers are living through something very difficult right now and they have to take care of themselves, just like we do. It's hard to say goodbye to someone you love, but because you love them, you understand what they're going through and we show up. This is what we can do as a community. And our, what I hope that our students' experience has changed is teachers that stay with them, that want to work here, that are happy to come to work. I don't have time for it, but I also served on the Asheville City Schools Foundation. We did a listening project with Asheville High and Sosa and heard the most amazing ideas and I would want all of that to come back.
Thank you. This next question, final one of the large questions, will begin with Amy Ray. If the district could spend five million dollars on increasing racial equity in our schools, how would you recommend that money be spent?
Thank you. Amy Ray, yes, that question. Yeah, you know, I, I have to say that I mean, five million dollars is a lot of money. What I, I'll say what I would not do, and I know that's maybe a pop-out and I'm going to try to get to what I would do. What I would not do is buy the next curriculum and, and tell the students that they have everything that they understand about how to teach. I'm convinced that equity is going to come when every child feels held. I'm convinced that equity is going to come when every child feels held and known. I think pre-K, and I know K-12, I don't want to dismiss it. I'm not going to put $5 million into pre-K because the county's going to do it for us. But I do think that that is going to be really important for us, not to close our pre-K classrooms because we need that county money. And then for the $5 million, I think what we do with it is raise teacher salaries, give teachers the tools that they need. When they tell us they need therapists in the hallways, that's what they should have. So I wouldn't say there's any one big budget item that I would spend $5 million on. And I'll tell you what else I wouldn't do is go and blow it in the first 30 days of my board leadership, right? I would hold on to that and listen first. Educate myself about what teachers tell me they need to help with equity. And then I would be very careful and spend it wisely.
Okay, Jesse Moore, $5 million. Okay, I think we should answer some of those questions about health. We should put some money into the health of our kids, of the students. That's where some of us should go. Another portion should go to my pocket. No, not in my pocket. You know, we haven't talked about the custodians, the, that staff of people. They're really workful. It does everything for our kids. That will pick up your kid on time, clean the buildings up, clean up after the teachers. I mean, come on. So we need to put some funds into them because they're going away, just like teachers are. Because we're not taking care of them, right? Give us some insurance, right? And let them want to drive our kids to and fro. Because if they don't drive our kids to and fro, guess who's going to be driving our kids to and fro? It's going to be us. You guys are going to be doing a lot of the carpool. So we need to support those custodians, those bus drivers. We need to put some money into the health of our kids. All right, we talked about that. See how we can support that family, right? And maybe this, you see, maybe have a cookie date one day. Give every kid a cookie date.
Liza English Kelly. Sorry, I keep forgetting to introduce myself before I answer. Public speaking is not my forte. By increasing access to public Montessori, dramatically extended access to pre-K, the things that we know are a long-term investment and that are going to serve our community for years to come. We need to ensure that all staff are making a living wage. Lift our teacher salaries to ensure that they, no staff member should have to work a second job in this district. We need to eliminate student lunch debt. And we need to listen to the black and brown students and families that we serve. What do they need? That's who needs to be brought to the table, long-term. And if I'm elected to the board, I want to ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Miriam Santi. It's so weird to say your name every time. So for me, there are three things that I would invest, not all the money, but a lot of it. Specifically for the equity part of the question, one would be in pre-K because I think that is a place where the gap can be closed. Another one would be in quality after-school. So it's not just like AP City or it needs to be tutor-based and to have a high-quality after-care for all kids. And the third thing would be summer camps. Summer camps for kids that cannot afford other camps. It should be summer camps that allow the gap that widens during summer because some kids get to go to high-quality camps and some kids do not. And I think that is a place, again, where we can close the gap. I also agree with teacher pay should be better. I think it's terrible that teachers need to work a second job. Makes no sense to me. And I would like as well to talk to teachers and staff and figure out where to invest what is left of the $5 million that I have spent on the other three things that I said.
I, I, keep going, keep going. Yeah, yeah, both of you, I appreciate it. I already know where that $5 million is coming from. It doesn't have to come out of the air. We only need to gain back 400 students to get that extra $5 million every single year. That's the math on that. Or, you know, let's get back the 500 that we lost. Let's grow the district a little bit. You know, they say, I've been hearing a lot in budget discussions that the numbers, you know, like those are the numbers. And I guess I just want to say those are the numbers. We can expand pre-K. We should have 15 preschool classrooms at 421 Haywood Road in that Asheville Primary building. We should be looking at having schools within schools with magnet themes for Asheville Middle School. With a pot orientation of Asheville Middle School, there's no reason for that school to be almost one-third vacant. We really need themes and things that really inspire families to come into the district. And we can build that vertically through that building. There are so many things we can do to develop programs. We just need to rebuild our enrollment and make sure that we are welcoming to all of Asheville to be part of our community. I think we can do it.
Rebecca Strimer. Very weird, Mary. I've had the distinct pleasure of serving as a volunteer for an organization called Useful Land, led by Mrs. Eleanor Earl. And in doing work for her, I learned some very important concepts about what needs to happen, particularly to support black children in our district. And so I take no credit for this. And as much of it has been said, we need pre-K. We absolutely need pre-K. $5 million, I would want to see that grow pre-K. Miri brought it up as well. Summer and after-school programming is a crazy quilt right now. It's spread out over many organizations. Our district could be a leader in bringing people together. We are the school district. And helping to get sound foundations curriculum, which is the curriculum that we use in Nashville City Schools to teach our kids to read. We can get it into preschools, we can get it into summer programs, and we can get it into after-school programs. I've learned from an amazingly smart executive director at Reach to Succeed that when children are exposed to different ways of learning to read, there's a cognitive load that's very difficult for them. Instead, if we all get on the same page, then those children will be getting the learning in all the same places. And Ms. Earl advocates for that fiercely, and I have many more notes. I'm Sarah Thornburg, and I'm going last, and I'm assuming that the $5 million is from New Orleans, you. I I think smaller class sizes, pre-K through the 12th grade, where teachers have the ability to work with students where they are, what each student needs, which is vastly different. I was really struck today by a video I saw. The Asheville City Schools Foundation has this amazing program at the high school called REAP, which is a little dark, but it stands for Racial Equity Ambassador Program. And it's this amazing group of students. And they have come up with, I think, eight topics of things they want to see. And the first one is visibility. And these kids say, I would like my teacher to greet me at the door and know my name. And you think, gosh, that would be amazing. I mean, I know it, I know it happens, but I think with smaller class sizes, teachers could meet kids where they are. And I think that could have an amazing effect on helping every kid reach their aspirations.
Thank you. For this final round, we have three very brief questions. And due to time, we ask that candidates do not elaborate on their answers. This question will begin with Jesse Moore. And this one's going to be very brief because I think it's been answered a few times. But have you all had children attend Asheville City Schools?
Yes, graduated '09.
Four, yes. Yes, two. Yes.
One and a half.
Yes. Yes. Okay. This question will begin with Liza Kelly. Have you volunteered in the Asheville City Schools in the past two years? Yes. Yes.
Yes, and the shade structure is beautiful.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, this last question. You're going to be tempted. There we go. You're going to be tempted to elaborate on this last question. As you have heard, Dr. Freeman will be retiring in November this year. In three words, what are three qualities you're looking for in a new sprint?
Connection to the community. Integrity. Leadership.
Learning from dissenting.
Honest, supportive servant leader.
Trust in the teachers and build relationships.
Servant leader. Transparent. Confident.
As someone visible, someone that is firm, and someone that is honest.
Invested, integrity, and collaborative.
Okay. First of all, let's give them a round of applause. You all are just so amazing. I think we just need to expand the number of board members, and we could just elect all of you. You guys could organize an anthill and save our souls. I could see it. Also, I just want to reiterate and thank the existing school board members who are working really hard. And we all know that they're in a really tough situation right now, and they're doing a great job. So thanks for saying thank you.
I'd still like to shout out to Rhonda Alomar, the NCE organizer. So out in the lobby, I believe, some candidates may have signs. Is that true? Maybe not, never mind. Asheville City Association of Educators does have some information.